Ladies and gentlemen, thank you for being here for the first City Council meeting in October of 2015. Would you please stand with me for the pledge of allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the republic of America and to the republic which stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Holly, would you take the roll, please? Start voting, please. Holly?
Yawn is not here tonight. All councilors present, an acquorum has been declared, excluding Yawn. He is not here.
I believe he had sent an email indicating he was not going to be here this weekend, requesting to be excused.
Thank you, Heather. Next up, we have agenda approval. Are there any additions or deletions to the agenda?
Yes, there's the deletion. We are deleting the needs and desires hearing for Caviar's liquor. They withdrew their application. They're going to do a new one for a different location.
I motion we approve the agenda as amended and excuse Counselor Bee Hill.
Second. I have a motion in a second. Is there any further discussion on the agenda? Now start voting, please.
The motion carried unanimously.
Thank you, Holly. Next up, we have citizen comment. Alamosa City Council welcomes your comments. Citizens wishing to speak may obtain and complete a speaker card through the city clerk at the start of the meeting. Holly, do we have any cards today?
There should be one.
One?
It's Jim Poston.
There we go. Thank you, Charlie. All right. We have one card from a gentleman named Jim P.O.S.R.O.W. or R.O.U.?
T.O.I., Detroit, Boston, O.P.
Thank you, sir. Thank you for being here. Would you approach the podium and give us your name and address for the record, please?
I'm Jim. I'm Jim Poston from Monte Vista, Colorado, and I'm a volunteer with Locomotive 169, sitting out right outside the building. It's been a while since we've had an update to the City Council on your historic treasure out there. So you may have noticed that the steam locomotive does have a name and a number on it so that people driving by can see that it is Locomotive 169 from the Denver and Rio Grande Western Railroad. I happen to be in Creed with Rural Philanthropy Days. Your city manager and some other folks that I've seen here were very well represented. Counselor Coleman, I saw you up there. So I was not here when the Locomotive 168, the twin sister to the 169, made it over the bridge on its way to Antonito for an operational restoration. But to catch the Council up on the 169, we've had a volunteer group that we're calling the Boots Group. We are actually performing the work on the locomotive. We're paying for the paint, other expenses out of our own pockets, and it's a magnificent machine to work on, and the long-term goal is to get that locomotive operating again. Financially, we had $1,000 donated by the Alamosa Marketing District, and we had a contribution from one of our volunteers to bring a steam locomotive expert down to inspect the locomotive as a follow-on to the 1999-2000 inspection that we had on the engine. And as we've said previously, the locomotive is in very good mechanical shape, excellent mechanical shape. One of the spinoffs from the Rural Philanthropy Days program was there are a number of foundations that are willing to fund a 501(c)(3) nonprofit organization. We've been in touch with the Valley Community Fund, and they are willing, for a certain fee, to handle the finances of the steam locomotive restoration. So the first Saturday of every month, as usual, we've got the pavilion open. We have the keys to the kingdom, so you're all invited to stop by. You're all invited to stop by. Thank you very much.
Thank you, sir. Any comments or questions? Jim? Counsel? Counselor Diego?
Jim, I'd just like to thank you for all the hard work you guys do on that because I've talked to a lot of people that come over that bridge, and once they hit that locomotive, boy, it really sticks out. So it really sends a great, great message of the community. So thank you, and I've seen you guys working there all the time.
Well, we'll look for you to darken our doorway very soon, sir. Thank you.
Counselor Coleman?
Jim, I would like to also thank you for giving us this update, as well as participating in the Rural Philanthropy Days event that happened. Bringing awareness to what you and your group does is important to our community, so keep it up.
Will do, sir. Thank you.
Thank you, Jim. You know, railroading is a cornerstone of our community, and what a beautiful feature we have in our community, as Charlie said, when you drive over the bridge, or one of our councilors did. Anyway, we're very proud of it, and we want to thank you for taking such interest in that beautiful piece of history for us.
And I have to give credit to the Boots Group, the folks that are actually volunteering. We show up there the first Saturday of every month. We have a week in May, a week in June, and a week in July that we're open either to do work or to show people around. We've had a number of people stop by that say, "Yeah, we used to play on that steam locomotive when it was on display in the park." Nobody admits to the graffiti inside, though.
Thank you, Jim.
Thank you.
Appreciate it. Next up, we have ceremonial items, and tonight we wish to recognize the Kaboom participants. You know, it's amazing, but people have dreams and aspirations, and all of a sudden, kaboom! It happens, you know? And we are so proud of the participants that participated in this. But let me give you a little bit of history on some of the things that happened and how and when they happened. But anyway, La Puente first became aware of this grant opportunity and brought it to the city's attention in early June. Working together, the city and La Puente worked through the application and interview process to ensure that Alamosa was selected. With Kaboom as the organizing agency and Colorado Health Foundation as the funder for the project, Alamosa embarked on the playground adventure. La Puente first became aware of this grant op-- oh, I'm sorry. Got that one twice. The city committed $8,500 for the match, with the local Rotary Group committing to fundraising and grants to help offset that amount. Part of the unique aspect of the project was the ability to have the community design the park. Design workshops were held with youth and adults to collect input on July the 30th. Top three designs were put to a public vote. To put this process in perspective, in about a six-week timeframe, the park was designed by the community and built by the community. Handling a lot of behind-the-scenes work was a core organizing committee of eight individuals who met at least weekly. This behind-the-scenes work included site preparation, volunteer organization, medical emergency support, food services, public outreach, and other things. Their effort paid off with over 100 volunteers showing up for the prep day on September the 10th, and almost 300 volunteers showing up for build day on September the 12th. While we are presenting certificates of appreciation to the core organizing committee, we also want to acknowledge everyone who supported the project. And some of those folks were-- bear with me, because it's a very long list. From ASU, we have the nursing. We have the women's lacrosse, men's lacrosse, women's basketball, the swim team, the sci-fi club, Model UN, Circle K, men's basketball, and ASNF senators. From La Puente, we had Lance Cheslock, Nicole Montregger from PELZ, and Bethany Howell. She was also a committee leader, along with Art and Patty Ortiz, Jan Owen, Lorena Sanchez, Andy Rice, Heinz Bergen, and Gina Delet. City of Alamosa was involved as far as council went. Public Works with staff for site preparation and hand tools, our police department for patrols, and the Parks and Recreation for staff, site preparation, hand tools, and funding. Colorado Health Foundation funding and Rotary Club works and funding. San Luis Valley Health for lunch, F's Restaurant for breakfast, Alamosa County for wheelbarrows and hand tools, ACCC for promotion, ACVB for promotion, Alamosa Courier for promotion, San Luis Valley Arts and Entertainment Committee for the tents, Red Wheelow, San Luis Valley Transportation, $1,500, City Market gift cards, Safeway gift cards, Milagros for coffee, Little Caesar's for pizza, and Pepsi with water, Living Water Church, DJE, Ephraim, naturally, San Luis Valley Area Health Education Center, Black Forest Lutheran Church of Colorado Springs, the Knights of Columbus, Southside Neighborhood Revitalization Group, and the Boy Scouts Troop 307. Quite a few people got involved. What a wonderful park we have. If you've seen it, you realize the energy that went into that. And with that, I do have certificates for the core group, and I hope they're here, all of them. Counsel, would you come down and help me hand these out? Before we do that, let me announce who they are again. Ariana Sanchez. Jan Owen. Bethany Howell. Gina Delet. Andy Rice.
And Mayor, I'm wondering if two pictures, maybe one with the organizing group, and then maybe a big group picture for everyone who participated and showed up for tonight?
Thank you, Heather. I think that would be better, and then we can get a group picture. Would that be all right? First, the charge of Patty Ortiz. Okay. Andy Rice. Thank you. Jan Owen. Ariana Sanchez. Of course. Thank you very much. Andrew, you're behind Greg. Thank you all. Come on up. Everybody that was involved.
Everybody that participated, we should come forward.
There's some people from L.A. who said, "You freaked out."
We got them all on the roof. We might-- we might-- we can sign up. Those people still get up after they get down. Those people still get up after they get down. We can get a few more up in here, probably, as well. Yeah, there you go. All right. All right. Ready? Thank you.
I wanted to make a couple of comments, Mayor.
Thank you, Charlie.
I had an opportunity to be with part of that group when they first started, and I know they all took off. But it was such a great thing to have this community come together and the people. Bethany was one of the main ones there that just kept everybody together, and our staff, you know, with the strong staff that we have there with Heinz and Andy, to make sure everything really took off. That was a tremendous deal. But another person I think that we need to-- and I asked Heather, maybe we might send some kind of a thank you, is Brianna, the young lady that came down and did the organization and kind of kept everybody going. She was the one that got everybody fired up, even at the park, and just kept the whole thing going. And one person, too, even though she takes-- she's always taken notes about our meetings, is Ruth Heidi. She participated with the group, and it was quite a deal to have all this community come together, so I want to thank them. Thank you.
Thank you, Charlie. Anyone else? Counselor Gillespie?
Yes, I went by that park last week. Turned out very nice, so I'd like to thank everyone that participated in that, something to be proud of. So thank you for your efforts.
Counselor Coleman?
Yes, it was a great effort on the entire community to show their support and collaborate to make this event happen and to get that playground. I was really impressed with the organization and how everyone worked together and how they had the pieces separated to where it would be easy to put together in one day. But more importantly, I was very impressed to see the kids actually using the equipment when I had an opportunity to visit the park. So kudos and good luck to the whole community, and thank you for all your work.
Thank you. I'll just echo what Counsel has to say. I drove by there a few hours after they had completed, and all the colors are just magnificent, and what a positive step for that part of our community. That's Charlie's ward, and what an improvement we've made there. And hopefully, in the future, we can think about, hopefully, improving some of our other playground equipment and parks as we go through time. Next up, we have Consent Calendar A. Consent Calendar allows multiple actions with one motion. Consent Calendar A contains routine items which have been recommended for action by staff or advisory boards. Counsel may remove a consent calendar item for separate consideration. Tonight, we have the approval of the minutes of the meeting for September 16, 2015.
If there's no questions, Mayor, I'll make the motion to approve Consent Calendar A.
I second it.
I have a motion in a second on approval of the minutes. Is there any further discussion? Seeing none, start voting, please. Holly?
The motion carried unanimously.
Thank you. And so we'll move on to regular business, business brought forward by city staff. Public Works, where we're gonna-- thank you, Pat, for being here. Now, we have a public hearing and final reading on ordinance number 14-2005, should be 2015, and ordinance renaming Cottonwood Drive and Cottonwood Court as depicted on the replat of Carroll Subdivision Edition Number Two, as filed in the records of the Alamosa County Clerk and Recorder on November 16, 1982, under reception number 220402. Thank you, Pat.
Thank you, sir. This is essentially a housecleaning item. We-- Cottonwood Drive is the northerlymost section of Douglas Drive, and Cottonwood Court is a short cul-de-sac extending easterly from Cottonwood Drive. Both of these streets lie within the Carroll Special Improvement District. This is problematic as we already have a Cottonwood Drive and a Cottonwood Circle in the golf course area. We have Cottonwood Place north of First Street and Cottonwood Lane north of State Highway 160 in east Alamosa. This can create confusion for emergency responders. The Planning Commission has examined this issue, and in light of the fact that Cottonwood Drive is essentially an extension of Douglas Drive, they have recommended that it be renamed Douglas Drive and Cottonwood Court renamed Douglas Court.
Thank you, Pat. With that prelim, I will open the public hearing on-- I believe that's ordinance 14-2015, correct? Thank you. If there's anyone wishing to speak in favor or opposed to this ordinance, please step forward. Mr. McCann?
Dan McCann, 1809 Sunset Drive, Alamosa, Colorado. Now, it's a good idea to make it easy for emergency vehicles to find their way around, but also, and I've been on this planet almost 70 years, when you're visiting a community, having that kind of confusion, you're tired, you don't see those signs quite well, and most communities today, the lighting isn't that well. The lights are yellow to save electricity. I mean, they figured out a way. By the way, I lived up in Colorado Springs for five years. Pike's Peak makes the place dark. It really does. I joined a Corvette club up there. I go up there, and they have a meeting, and then they have a meeting to go to a restaurant. You can't-- nobody has addresses lit up, so if you can make it easy for people to get around, I appreciate that as someone who's been on this planet almost 70 years.
Thank you, Mr. McCann. Is there anyone else wishing to speak on ordinance number 14-2015? Seeing no one, I will close the public hearing and bring it back to Counsel for a decision or further discussion. Counselor Diego?
As Pat said, this is more of a housecleaning type of deal, so if there's no further questions, I'll make the motion to approve ordinance number 14-2015.
I have a motion in a second. Is there any further discussion on ordinance 14-2015? Seeing none, start voting, please. Holly?
The motion carried unanimously.
Thank you. Next up, we have city manager and legal. We have three issues this evening. The first one will be a combined public hearing on the preliminary order contained in Resolution 11-2015, intent to create an SID for Carroll Subdivision Number Two, gas, electric, and street lighting, and preliminary order for the improvements. A public hearing and final reading on ordinance number 16-2015, creating a Special Improvement District 2015-1 to provide for the installation of gas, electric, and street lighting improvements in portions of Carroll Subdivision Number Two, and a public hearing and final reading on ordinance number 18-2015, and ordinance authorizing issuance of a preliminary order for the construction of such improvements in Special Improvement District 15-1. Is this Heather or--
It's me, Mayor.
Thank you. Thank you, sir.
Counsel, this action is all concerning a-- you might almost call it a subset of the Special Improvement District that was created in 2014 to provide streets, water and sewer, and sidewalks within this portion of Carroll Subdivision Number Two that's depicted on the exhibit. And if you look at the exhibit, you can see that the subset contains, I think it's 24 lots. The lots that are in black are the lots that are not currently served by electricity or gas. No lots are served by streetlights, but those are the lots that are not currently served by electricity or gas. And the other numbered lots that are not the black lots are lots that were in the prior Special Improvement District but that are currently served by electricity and gas, and so they are not included within this Special Improvement District. Now, within this action that you have, there are three subsets, because what we need to do is have a public hearing on three different things, but they all concern this Special Improvement District, and they really all concern the same issues, and so it didn't make sense to try to limit anything that anyone might have to say artificially. So we're combining the public hearing for, first, the preliminary order which sets forth the kind of improvements that are going to be put in this Special Improvement District and how they will be put there. Second, a public hearing on the creation itself of the Special Improvement District. And finally, a public hearing on approval of that preliminary order and authorization of the gas, electric, and street lighting as set forth in the preliminary order. So the action that you will take will be threefold. After the public hearing, you will consider in turn-- twofold, I should say. So the public hearing on the preliminary order itself, you don't really take action on, but you do then take action on that preliminary order through resolution-- I'm sorry, through ordinance number 18-2015, which approves that preliminary order and authorizes the construction. Prior to doing that, you'll want to take action on ordinance number 16-2015, which creates the Special Improvement District to provide gas and electric in this portion of Carroll Subdivision Number Two. So we've heard a lot about Carroll Subdivision Number Two lately. The closeout of the streets, street lighting-- I'm sorry, the streets, the sidewalks, and the water and sewer has recently been before you. This is the second part of that project that was not covered by the original bond issuance that was approved by the electors within this Special Improvement District. These improvements are not able to be financed by tax-exempt bonds, so the way the ordinance envisions financing the gas, electric, and street lighting improvements is through fronting the cost for those by the city and having the city repay-- After the public hearing, you will consider in turn... Twofold, I should say. So, the public hearing on the preliminary order itself, you don't really take action on, but you do then take action on that preliminary order through resolution... I'm sorry, through ordinance number 18-2015, which approves that preliminary order and authorizes the construction. Prior to doing that, you'll want to take action on ordinance number 16-2015, which creates the special improvement district to provide gas and electric in this portion of Carroll Subdivision Number Two. So, we've heard a lot about Carroll Subdivision Number Two lately. Their closeout of the streets, street lighting... Or, I'm sorry, the streets, the sidewalks, and the water and sewer has recently been before you. This is the second part of that project that was not covered by the original bond issuance that was approved by the electors within this special improvement district. These improvements are not able to be financed by tax-exempt bonds, so the way the ordinance envisions financing the gas, electric, and street lighting improvements is through fronting the cost for those by the city, and having the city repay through the assessments levied pursuant to the special improvement district. The cost for that, I'd have to pull up the ordinance, but it's on the order of $41,000, according to the estimate from Excel, to install gas, electric, and the street lighting. And there's, by the way, a significant savings on the street lighting being done in conjunction with the gas and electric, as opposed to being done on its own, which is one of the reasons that even though street lighting was one element that was included in the prior special improvement district authorization, we thought it better to take advantage of those cost savings and do it at the same time as the gas and electric with this second special improvement district. So, you need to have a public hearing on all those aspects of the gas and electric installation in this portion of the Carroll Subdivision Number Two, and after considering any evidence or comments that may be made at the public hearing, take action on those two ordinances for final approval.
Thank you, Eric. And so, with that, I will open the public hearing on the three items just discussed. Public hearing on the preliminary order contained in Resolution 11-2015, a public hearing and final reading on ordinance number 16-2015, and a public hearing and final reading on ordinance number 18-2015. The public hearing is now open. Anyone wishing to speak on this issue, please approach the podium. Identify yourself and your address for the record, please. Thank you, Mr. Van Rye.
Do I have to identify myself, since you already did?
Absolutely, absolutely, sir.
That's Arvin Van Rye. It's 429 West Pine, and it's Creed, Colorado. First of all, I'd highly recommend that the city council approve this, because we are not complete, and we can't build on there until this is done. And the lack of experience, those of us who helped put this together failed to recognize this portion, although with the management of the city and what they did, they saved enough money, if you will, as I understand it, that this is not really an additional cost to what's already been done. It's going to be financed differently, but it will be, I believe, less than what was originally proposed. I think, in some respects, we thought that would be... We could include that, but we didn't. And so, since it was a bond issue, it now has to be done separately. I'd recommend strongly that the city council consider this, so that we, in fact, can build on it, because at this moment, it still can't be built on, and we can't get building permits for obvious reasons until this is completed. And the way that it's been proposed, and the correspondence that I've received, is fair and equitable. Those who are going to receive it will pay for it, and those who do not need those services aren't going to be required to pay for it. So, I think that's fair and equitable. So, that's all I have to say. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Van Rye. Anyone else wishing to speak on this issue? Seeing none, I will close the public hearing and bring this back to city council for decision or discussion. Counselor Diego?
I guess I'll start. This has been a long process, as Eric says, that put it in... It went to the vote of the people, and it got passed. So, if I understand right, Eric, there's going to be two motions? Or three motions in this whole process?
Two motions, for approval of ordinance number 16-2015, creating the special improvement district, and for approval of ordinance number 18-2015, excuse me, approving the preliminary order and authorizing construction of the improvements as set forth in that order. And just for your reference, the preliminary order is contained in your earlier Resolution Number 11-2015, which is why that's reproduced in your materials.
Another comment is that this area, by doing what we pushed forward, I think it's going to create some nice areas where people can build some really nice homes, and it's really improved that area of town. So, thank you.
Counsel Gillespie?
If there's no further discussion, I motion we approve resolution... Or, ordinance number 16-2015, creating a special improvement district for installation of gas, electric, and street improvements.
I second it.
I've got a motion and a second on ordinance number 16-2015. Is there any further discussion on that individual ordinance? Seeing none? Start voting, please. Holly?
The motion carried unanimously.
Thank you, and I will need another motion on ordinance, what, 18-2015?
I have a question first on, I guess, this second ordinance. Why are we not... How can we go to the taxpayers and say this is interest-free loan?
When we began communication with these property owners, we were under the impression that another one that we had recently done was not charging interest, and so we were trying to decide how much interest would we base it on, that type of thing. And with the impression that we were not charging it, we wanted to be consistent with that. That's the communication we had sent, or we didn't send it, but we communicated to those property owners. After that communication, which partially occurred at a council meeting, we learned that that more recent one, we are charging interest. But since this has been a project that has changed, and I think become somewhat frustrating for those involved, we wanted to stay consistent and not charge the interest. But it is certainly council's prerogative if you want to do something different.
Okay, thank you.
Counselor Diego?
If there's no further questions, I'll make the motion that we approve on final reading ordinance number 18-2015, an ordinance authorizing construction of gas, electric, and streetlight public improvements within the city of Alamosa, Special Improvement District 15-1, Carroll Subdivision Edition Number Two, and approve issuance of a preliminary order for the construction of such improvements in Special Improvement District 15-1.
I second.
I've got a motion and a second. Is there any further discussion on 18-2015? Seeing none? Start voting, please. Holly?
The motion carried unanimously.
Thank you, counsel, and thank you, staff. Next up, we have ordinance 20-2015, establishing the employee pay plan for fiscal year 2016. Heather?
This information should look somewhat familiar, since we most recently conducted the market survey. It's the same pay plan that was presented at that time. There has not been any changes to the minimum or the maximum on what you see before you. We felt that, since we had just conducted the market analysis, that we were okay putting any increases towards the performance increases, and not need to do a cost-of-living adjustment this close to having done just the market survey. So, that's why you do not see any changes in the minimum or the maximum from what we reviewed previously. Essentially, this sets out the pay plan. The city manager is only authorized to hire anyone within these pay ranges, and the recommendation is for council to adopt this on first reading and set it for public hearing for October
Thank you, Heather. We have any questions or comments of staff on the pay plan? Counselor Diego?
I don't have any questions, though, but I want to thank staff for putting together the... It's more of a housecleaning type of deal, and I want to make the motion that we approve on first reading, ordinance number 2215, establishing the employee's pay plan, and set it for a public hearing on October 21st at 7:00 or soon thereafter.
I second it.
I've got a motion and a second on ordinance 20-2015. Is there any further discussion? Seeing none? Start voting, please. Holly?
The motion carried unanimously.
Thank you. We'll move on to ordinance 19-2015, adopting the proposed 2016 fiscal budget. Heather?
Thank you, Mayor. This is one of the backbones of what the city uses to guide its actions for the upcoming year. If you look line item by line item, you can see where the priorities are, where the costs are. It's also an important document to evaluate our revenue and look at what changes might be coming up. The budget overview, some of the high points is we do expect overall revenues to increase over the current year budget projections. If you recall, last year in 2014, we had several meetings where council wanted to become a little more aggressive with street projects and bring the fund balance down just a little bit. Still, very much have a solid fund balance, but to spend a little bit out of that to get some street projects done, and also, we pulled the police MVRs, body cameras, from that as well. So, we did spend down some of the unassigned fund balance to do those projects that were listed in the capital improvement plan, and those projects remain in the budget, and we'll continue to monitor the revenue in future years to see if we can continue with those or if there needs to be any changes. $75,000 was included in the Public Works Administration for hiring a consultant to develop a scope of work for the levy certification. This will be a significant project that we are undertaking, and this will be our first step to really get our hands around what that scope of work will entail. We finalized in this budget the centralization of all of our technology expenses, the hardware, the software, all of those for IT. We, for the first time, are including a line item for public art program, and it's in the nondepartmental division for $20,000. We have included funds for the police ballistics that will enable the police department to purchase firearms and ballistics and provide better training and equipment to our officers. We have also included funds to support the neighborhood watch programs in the amount of $4,000. We took a look at our call-out rate for fire personnel and made the recommendation that we should increase that from $1,850 to $20. We also added funds in the amount of $15,000 to property abatement in our nuisance area. This will allow us for those properties that we cannot find the property owner, and it cannot work its way through municipal court, that we can still take care of it and try to solve some of those issues the neighborhoods are facing. We also looked at a seasonal position and a part-time position in parks maintenance, one in regards to the noxious weed control, where we will need to get more aggressive in that area, and then the other is in relation to our special events, and making sure we have the right staffing to meet those needs. In the enterprise fund, we wanted to note that we are in the process of soliciting bids for a utility rate review. This will help us understand if our rates are appropriate, or if there needs to be any changes. We also included with that the proposal to look at what curbside recycling would cost. Through some recent discussions, members of the public have mentioned an interest in that, and we really don't have a big idea of how much that might cost, what that would involve, all of those types of things. We realize there's an ongoing push for environmental awareness, and again, that's why we're looking at the curbside recycling, and there's other discussions related to the plastic bag issue. And to make sure everyone understands some of the water issues we will, you know, continue to face, especially as we look at the arsenic regulations, water rights, and acquisitions related to that. In the recreation fund, just a reminder that we had committed last year to use some of the recreation fund towards the potential of a new ice rink facility, multipurpose. We have been successful so far in landing one grant in the amount of $200,000 through DOLA. We have another grant that's been submitted already to the Daniels Fund in the amount of $250,000, and we plan to make an application to GOCO next month for the amount of $350,000. If we are successful in those last two grants, that will bring in the $800,000 that was needed to complete that project. And with that, I am open to any questions, and Amanda is also here as well, if there's any questions.
Counsel, do we have any questions of staff? Counselor Coleman?
I don't have any questions of staff, because you've done a thorough job of going through this line by line, but I would like to thank the entire city staff, as well as council. I'd like to thank you for the group effort that you put into this budget process, and I want you to know that you did an amazing job of balancing the many wants and desires of our community as a whole. So, thank you for all of that hard work.
Counselor Diego?
I just want to also echo Mr. Coleman's comments. I think a city manager with their staff has put together a balanced budget, and I think it's from the retreats that we have gone through. It's kind of... It gives us the direction that we want to take and move this community forward. So, thank you, Heather, and all your staff.
Counsel Gillespie?
I'll have to echo that also. The city manager and staff has done a wonderful job. This may be one of the smoothest budget processes I've been through in the last six or seven years, remarkably smooth, and I think we... The city will benefit from it, so thank you.
This is kind of my first budget, and I think it went really smooth. You guys did a wonderful job in making us understand what the process was, got a handle on it, up to speed. Good job. Thank you.
Thank you, and I will echo what counsel has said. In the old days, we used to go down item... Line item by line item, and I don't know... Some of the headaches we used to have... Remember, Charlie? It was something that I don't want to go back to. Staff has definitely improved the way we approach our budget. We're more into the fund balancing, which takes a lot... Well, it takes a lot of stress out of our job, and as we look at the figures, you know, I think it's important for us to realize that we are addressing the needs of our community, and I think that, first and foremost, is really the most important thing about this budget, is that we are doing what we need to do and has to be done. Thank you, Heather, and Amanda, and all your staff members, all the department heads, for all the work that they do in getting this budget together. Thank you. And so, with that...
If there's no other comments, I'll go ahead and make the motion that we approve ordinance number 2015 on first reading and set it for a public hearing on October 21st at 7:00 or soon thereafter.
I second.
I have a motion and a second. Is there any further discussion on ordinance number 19-2015? Seeing none? Start voting, please. Holly?
The motion carried unanimously.
Thank you. And we will move on to committee reports. Does anyone have a committee report? Counselor Diego?
I have one on the airport board. We went ahead and they did some research on maybe trying to save the old airport building, and as they put the cost together, it was going to cost a lot more money than what it would to tear it down and take it out to the landfill, so they've decided to go ahead and just remove the building and just clear the area, and hopefully, one day, I guess, they'll build some kind of a fire safety type of deal there. Also, they were asking about the striping, and I had told them that because of the incident we had with our striper, that we would probably be using the old striper until we could get the new one fixed again, so I don't know what's the status there.
My understanding, we gave them the striper to use. Is that correct, Pat?
We've offered it for them to use.
Yeah, we've made... We've offered it for them to use. Yeah, we've, we've made, we've offered it for them to use and come pick up at any point. I would have thought they were done. It was...
No, no, they, according to them, they thought that maybe because of, we were doing striping ourselves and our striper got put out of commission that we were going to use ours. So if that's available, I will tell them. That's their impression. So it is available?
That's correct. It's available for their use.
Okay, good, good, good. And one more comment on another, on the marketing board. They're having their retreat tomorrow at the Sand Dunes, and Heather, I'm not going to be able to attend to that, so you also put Heather on that board along with, as an alternate, and I would appreciate if you would, you would attend that.
I have it on my calendar.
Thank you. That's all I have, Mayor.
Counselor Gillespie?
Yes, the library board met last month. Currently, we have six of the little free libraries around town. One of the little free libraries is sponsored by the Friends of the Library, and it's installed at the corner of Ninth and State, which is La Puente Admin Office. One sponsored by the Women's Citizenship Club at, at the Cutter Office. One at 223 Sixth Street, sponsored by the Optimist Club, and the Krebs Foundation sponsored one at the Senior Citizen Center, and the South Side Rejuvenation Committee has a little free library located at the Spotta Park. Each of these little free libraries is maintained by their sponsoring organizations. The books have been supplied by the Friends of the Library and the Alamosa Public Library. I'd like to thank Paul Patterson, who built five of the little free libraries, and Mark Jones, who built one. Also, the library is also working on the Story Walk project, which was to be implemented by the end of September. I'm sure that's coming along well. Circulations of books in the library is up eight percent since the beginning of January over the 2014 period. And remind everyone that there is a free movie and free popcorn night once a month at the library, so keep that on your calendar. Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor Gillespie. Next, we'll move up to staff announcements. Heather? Oh, I'm sorry. Counselor Stefano?
I just wanted to comment on the South Side Neighborhood Watch Program. We're moving forward with that. There's a meeting tomorrow night at the Baptist Church on State Street. I want to thank the police department for their involvement in this. It's going forward really great. Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor Stefano. Sometimes I don't see your light there. You know, Greg's, Greg's a big presence there. We will move on to staff announcements. Heather?
Mine is fairly short tonight, and it's mostly focused on the upcoming meetings. I know we've had some work sessions get moved around and trying to look at some potential dates, and so I wanted to review what we do have coming up. Specifically, I want to stress for those four who indicated you can attend tomorrow night, it is vital that we have all four of you attend. This is for the special meeting for the public hearings regarding the assessment closeout of the other portion of the SID. So if we're down to three, we will not be able to take action. So that is tomorrow. The other meetings we have coming up is the Meet the Candidates Forum on October 12th, which is the Monday. We do have a work session scheduled for October 14th in regards to mobile vending and the audit review. I hesitated to move those to October 21st just from a timing perspective. We need to get the audit closed out, and the mobile vending, we only did a three-month window, so I want to make sure you guys have ample time to receive that information and consider it. The Board Appreciation Dinner being handled by our city clerk is scheduled for October 19th, and at our next regular meeting on October 21st is the work session for team dynamics. And the other, that's not on your council calendar, but it is important for our GOCO application, is we are having a public meeting next week, October 14th at seven o'clock at the Ice Rink Multi-Use Pavilion. This is to collect public information on that application for GOCO. So it is at the Rec Center next week, October 14th at 7:00 PM, and the public is greatly encouraged to show up and provide input. I do think Holly had a little bit more information related to some of the election items, too.
So most of you know, or should know, that for Ward Three, L. V. Conley has withdrew, so he is no longer in the race. His name will still appear on the ballots, but his votes will not be counted since he was withdrawn.
Thank you, Holly. Are there any further staff announcements?
I have a question on the meeting tomorrow night. If that's at 6:00 PM, correct?
Yes, sir.
Will this be a long meeting or fairly short?
The topic is definitely not new. However, it is probably the one part of the whole discussion that is still not, for those properties who already have built, I think there's still some contention there with how the costs are applied. We have applied the formula based on council direction. I believe there is a letter we received that should be shared with council for someone who has kind of been against the project from the start. So I'm not sure if anyone from that group will show up to speak, but there's definitely not any new information or any new items related to that.
Okay, thank you.
Counselor Diego?
I had a couple of comments on staff announcements. On the 14th, Heather, I won't be here, so I'll be gone that 14th. And also, we keep on talking about this ice rink. I think we need to address this as a multipurpose pavilion of what a section of it is ice rink, and I think that's how we kind of sold it to the constituency. It is more of a multipurpose pavilion of which a portion of it is an ice rink, and I think we need to correct that because it's not an ice rink, even though it is, part of it is, so thank you.
And if I look at Heinz's flyers, he has appropriately marked that. I just did, I did not do a very good job of saying that, so thank you.
Thank you. So we will move on, and as a local licensing authority, we have two actions this evening. One is a decision on a new license application by Ike and Ike Incorporated, doing business as El Charro Cafe, and a needs and desires hearing on the application of Maria de Lourdes Lopez, doing business as Calvios Liquor.
And that one was the one that was removed.
Oh, I'm sorry. I forgot about that. All right, so we've got a decision on a new liquor license by Ike and Ike Incorporated, doing business as El Charro Cafe. Counsel? Eric, do you have any comments or observations?
I don't. As you typically request, in situations like this, I have prepared proposed findings for your consideration, one that would grant the license and one that would deny the license. You may adopt either one, and you may also make changes as you see fit to the proposed findings that I have submitted for your review.
Thank you, Eric. And so we will, counsel? Do we have anyone initiating the discussion on this decision? Counselor Diego?
I guess I'll start.
Let me just...
Okay, go ahead.
I think before we get into that, I believe that Counselor Stefano will need to recuse himself from this discussion. Is that correct?
For the record.
For the record.
For the record?
Yeah.
Okay.
So, and for the record, Counselor Stefano, if you would state the nature of your conflict of interest.
Excuse me?
State the nature of your conflict of interest for the record.
He's my brother.
Counsel, is it necessarily, does he necessarily have to leave, or can he be part of the, is he, can he be part of the discussion?
No.
No.
He may not participate in this.
Thank you very much. Counselor Diego?
Thank you, Mayor. I've had an opportunity to both visit the Charro, and it's been in our community for, Jesus, I am forgetting how many years, but it's been there for a lot of years, and it's provided great Mexican food for generations and generations. It's gotten to the point, I guess, as Mr. Lucero told us at our hearing, that he needs to make it bigger and have more parking. So with that, going, moving to where he's moved at, I think it'll be a good location. I think you'll get a lot of the college, a lot of other people that come through there. It's a good, a good location. I hate to see the old one go, and maybe there might be a way of keeping that one, because even today, as other restaurants are empty, you go by there, and that little place is always jam-packed. And it's a small little place. It's just the aesthetics, the way it's set up, I think people appreciate that and appreciate the good food that's been served there, you know. So I, like I said, I looked at what Eric had put together as far as granting and denying. I looked at the dates on some of those incidents, and they date back way back, and I believe that, you know, we should give an opportunity. People change. Things eventually work out, and we need to help out small businesses as much as we can. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you, Counselor Grego. Counselor, anyone else? Counselor Coleman?
Thank you, Mayor. Yeah, a couple components of economic development is retention and expansion, and by allowing Mr. Lucero the opportunity to get the liquor license will help us fulfill the goal of economic development when it comes to a particular business by allowing him to, to stay in Alamosa as well as expand his operation to serve more people. So I'm in line with moving forward with granting him this license.
Thank you. Is there any further discussion? I'd like to make an observation. I know that Mr. Lucero, both Luceros have had issues in the past. People change, and I really appreciate the fact that where El Charro is going to be located is such a positive, it's going to have a positive impact on that part of our community. That's, that building's been empty for quite a while, and serving beer and margaritas falls in line with what restaurants normally serve. And so aside from, aside from the histories of these two gentlemen, the positive impact of that business there, I think will fare well for our community. And so with that, I would probably be willing to grant, grant this license. Anyone else?
Well, Mayor, if there's no other comments, I'll go ahead and make the motion that we approve a new license for Ike and Ike, DAB El Charro Cafe.
I second it.
I have a motion and a second on the new license application for Ike and Ike. Is there any further discussion? Seeing none? Start voting, please.
The motion carried three to one with Counselor, can you change your screen to the One counselor voting no. And then Counselor Stefano abstaining.
Eric?
Well, the screen doesn't reflect that abstention, and you know, now the screen shows the voting no.
I've got, well, I've got one, I've got one abstention, one no, and three yes. That's what I have.
So what he's saying is he needs to know who said no.
Is that, is three enough to?
Yes.
Yes, okay.
The question is, the next screen, I think, will reflect what we're...
Is there a button that you push that usually changes it to the next screen on there? There we go.
Sorry.
So the motion carries three to one.
Thank you. All right. Next up, we have counsel comment. Counsel, who has a comment?
I would like to make a brief comment in regards to the Chamber and ACID. I would like to commend them for the effort that they've done this past month. Seems like we've had several ribbon cuttings throughout Alamosa, and that's a sign of strong economic growth, and I'd just like to encourage them for that, the effort that they have and what they're doing so far throughout our community.
Thank you. Counselor Gillespie?
I don't know if anyone's been out today, but the new track, the walking track at Cole Park was finished. Turned out very nice. That's definitely an improvement to that park.
As mayor, I'd like to make a comment specific to safety out in our community. It seems as though there's been a rash of accidents, pedestrian, bicycle involvements, and if there's anything I can do or say, I would encourage the folks in our community, take that extra few minutes and make sure that, you know, you're traveling the speed limit, that you observe people on bicycles and pedestrians. Please be careful out there. I know the time is going to change. It's getting darker now. It's harder to see, not only wildlife, pedestrians, other vehicles, so, so please, take that extra time, be a little careful, and let's see if we can stop a lot of these collisions that we're having in bike and pedestrian accidents. Thank you. And with that, I will adjourn this meeting. Meeting adjourned. Thank you, counsel.